Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Cervantes and I will be presenting the project at 601 North Pacific Street. Staff in the Downtown Advisory Committee recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the development plan and regular coastal permit for the demolition of the existing single-family dwelling and construction of a duplex with basement parking at 601 North Pacific Street. And the site is within the appeal jurisdiction of the local coastal zone. The project was reviewed by the Downtown Advisory Committee on July 25th of this year, and they voted 6-1 to recommend the Community Development Commission approve the project. The property is at the corner of North Pacific and Surf Rider Way and is surrounded by residential uses. The existing two-story, single-family residence was built in the 1890s but is not listed on any historical designation list. The existing house currently has a legal non-conforming corner sight yard setback and a single-car garage. These are pictures of the existing conditions where you can see the single-car garage. And this is the non— on the Surf Rider side, the legal non-conforming side. And here's from the distance as well. The development plan and the coastal permit request is to demolish the existing housing garage, construct a duplex with four non-tantum parking spaces, as can be seen by the basement level floor plan here. The proposed basement level parking will be accessed off a new curb cut on Surf Rider Way. The first floor plan has Unit 1 that has roughly 4,000 square feet of living space and 1,000 square feet of outdoor living space, highlighted in green, and Unit 2 with roughly 830 square feet of living space and 320 square feet of outdoor space, highlighted in red. The first level consists of mostly common living space and kitchen for both units. Level 2, Unit 1 in green and Unit 2 in red, consists of mostly sleeping area for both units. The project uses a modern style with various materials. This is the elevation from North Pacific Street. This is the project from Surf Rider Way. And the proposal includes stepping back the habitable space on the west side for a tiered effect. The project is consistent with the downtown zoning ordinance and would revitalize the site as well as increase housing stock in the coastal area. The project also complies with the local coastal program and general plan, and a historic assessment submitted to the city concluded that the structure is eligible for demolition. At this time, staff and the Downtown Advisory Committee recommend approval of the downtown development plan and regular coastal permit for 601 North Pacific. I am available for questions as well as the architect for the project.
Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
My name is Jennifer Boland. I'm with AOS Architecture, and I designed the project for my clients Lori and Mark Matthews. Stephanie covered most of the important information regarding the project. I did just want to note a few things. Wanted to emphasize that we're increasing housing density, increasing onsite—we're overparked on onsite parking and we're increasing onsite parking by adding an additional stall by closing the curb cut on the upper— on the first level on Pacific. We're also going to be enhancing the view corridor because the existing—the public view corridor because the existing non-conforming structure on Surf Rider encroaches and—is actually at property lines, so we're going to be conforming to the setback at 10 feet, which will enhance the view corridor down Surf Rider Way. And then, the occupants are going to be—it's an owner-occupied building for the main larger structure, and they are local business owners, and they're going to have pride of ownership here. And as part of our project process, we did do neighborhood outreach where we sent out mailing labels to all of the neighbors on the mailing list who would be notified and invited them to come to the site on a Saturday before—we were in the early stages of planning at the city—and we heard any concerns and had people view the plans. And we didn't have major concerns brought up to us, and to date have not heard of major concerns. And addition to that, I just wanted to mention, as Stephanie had kind of referenced on the corner there, we did open up—we're exceeding the setbacks on the southwest corner intentionally to enhance the view corridor for the public. So, other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any speakers? Is there anyone who wishes to address this issue as it is a public hearing?
I'm the neighbor directly north. Your name? Marty Bardell. I live at 603 North Pacific Street. My only concern is the slope, the integrity of the hill. Is there any way I can see any of that information on—the studies done on the integrity of the hill and how you're going to protect my property from sliding as you construct your property?
Is there anyone else that wants to address this item? Then we will close the public hearing, and you can respond.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, we did—initially in the design, I actually had pulled the basement structure off from below because I anticipated not needing shoring, but we had a soils report done and there is sand and—to your concern—we found that anyhow we would be required to have a shoring wall because the structure, as you go down, would be failing. So, we're going to be putting in a permanent in-place shoring wall during construction that will then waterproof the backside and then put up the foundation, so that should address your concerns.
Councilmember McKernan?
I'm going to move approval of this project. I just got to make—I guess maybe one further disclosure. Back in 1980, I was actually inside this house. Friend of mine, Chris Parsons, lived there for a number of years before he moved to Telluride. So, he—so, I actually have been inside the house, and it should have been torn down in 1980. So, anyway, I move approval.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I'm going to second, and I want to say thank you so much for keeping with the height and not having anything projecting. Thank you very much for the non-tantum parking, onsite parking. I mean, that's fantastic. I will say that I will miss seeing the house there. Gosh, I've seen—it—how old is it? I mean, every ti—that's the route I take to go down to the strand, and I'm going to miss seeing that, but, you know, you have a wonderful architecture there, too. So, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Lowery?
Thank you. Can you tell me where the curb cut is?
The current curb cut?
The new one.
The new one. You can see it—let me see, is there—on—you can see the drive on the left-hand side of the rendering. It's backed away from the corner. So, if you look, it's right there. And—oh, here's a pointer. It's right—it's right here. And engineering reviewed it for the corner sight distance as well.
So, the picture's incorrect. It shows a curb there, not a curb cut. So, that's why I was asking if the illustration—
Oh, it—you can see the driveway on the illustration.
Okay.
Is it just back? I'm sorry, I'm missing this up for you. All right. So, that's—that's right here. You can see the driveway, and it goes in there below.
Well, the red curb. Okay.
Oh, well, yeah, we won't paint it red.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five-oh.
So, we'll go to 18, which is a regular coastal permit for exterior staircase, and we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff only.
Staff, the public, and I've been by the site.
Staff.
Brief conversation with Oceanside Seek Center.
Staff only.
Mr. Nightengale?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightengale, here to present Agenda Item 18 for the Sea Center Stairwell and Balcony Remodel. This is an image of the proposed stairwell to the left. We are here for adoption of a resolution approving a regular coastal permit to construct an exterior staircase to an existing two-story commercial building located at 315 Harbor Drive, currently utilized by the Sea Center business. This regular coastal permit consists of adding, like I said, a two-story stairwell. The stairwell consists of galvanized tubular handrails, metal steps, cable wall faces, and galvanized steel posts, which I'll show you in the rendering. The existing north-facing balcony would be remodeled to be consistent with the materials and the designs proposed within the stairwell, as well as the west-facing balcony will also be reconstructed with some glass railing to complement the storefront and the windows. Like I said, here, the balcony is not subject to the regular coastal permit because it's considered more of a changing of materials. A little background on the site. The project did go to the Harbor Beaches and Advisory Committee on August 14, 2018, where they voted 5-0 with committee members Rhea and Kramer Epstein. Here's an image of the existing building as it is today. It's 2,700 square feet, was constructed in 1981, and it's been utilized by the Hellgrin's Fishing Charters prior to its current vacancy—or occupancy. Here's an image of where the site is located. Like I said in the intro, it's at 315 Harbor Drive. It's directly located south from Lot 8A parking lot and is Zone H for the Harbor District. Here's an image of the subject facade where they wish to propose the stairwell. And here's an image of the plan. The proposed will provide additional access to the second floor. The second floor will not be open to the public. It's only going to be utilized entirely by the Sea Center staff for office use only. In the event that they ever have a handicap individual working for them, they are going to construct a office exactly—would be exactly the same as the offices on the second floor, and this will make it ADA compliant. So, with that, here's the image of the proposal when completed. So, with that, staff, based on these following findings, finds the project compatible with the Small Craft Harbor and Development Regulations. The proposed development will enhance the property as well as the neighborhood and the harbor, and it complies with the local coastal program and the general plan. So, with that, staff asked for an adoption of resolution approving the regular coastal permit to construct the exterior staircase located at 315 Harbor Drive. This concludes our presentation. The applicant is also here tonight, too. Thanks.
Does the applicant want to make a presentation? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue?
We have one speaker currently, Jimmy Knott.
Then we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Move adoption.
Councilmember McKernan?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Lowery?
Scott, I have a question about the ADA—ADA compliance. So, having personal experience with second-level office space and not having access for ADA, at this point, that's legal as long as they promise to make an office space downstairs? Should they have an application for someone, you know, who's got a disability? Is that actually legal, is the question? Because I was told that's not legal. That already impedes application.
In speaking with the Building Division Head Plan Checker, they actually have a building permit on file that's pending in review right now, and they're proposing to construct an office down below with ADA capabilities if anyone were to be down there.
Oh, so they—they're proposing to do that right now with what they've got as part of their remodel or a subsequent remodel?
Right.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Please vote.
Five-oh.
We'll go to 19, which is a appeal of a Planning Commission denial of a time extension for the Ocean Point development. We'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Only staff and I was—it was a unanimous approval when we last saw this, so that in my discovery. That's it. Thanks.
Staff, I went to the public. I—in the neighborhood, I spoke to people who live right where that project is proposed, and I've been by the site.
Staff, I've been by the site, and members of the public?
I spoke to members of the public as I was walking through Oceana. I also received the two emails that we all received, and I believe that they're part of the record.
Are we—are the two emails part of the record?
Yes.
Okay. And I—I also took a tour down to the site. Thank you.
I've been by the site, staff, and public.
Mr. Nightengale?
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightengale from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item 19 for the Ocean Point time extension. This is to reverse the Planning Commission's decision to adopt the resolution granting the appeal of a Planning Commission's denial of the time extension. Back in 2008, they were approved for a tentative parcel map development plan and variances for the development of 158 attached condominium units on 35.8 acres. It's located at southeast of State Route 76 and Stagecoach Road and at the western terminus of San Ramon Drive. Little background, on March 24th, 2008, the Planning Commission did approve this project. Following that, it was appealed and sent to the City Council, where it was unanimously approved, 5-0, back in July 2nd, 2008. In addition to the two years provided with the original approval from the council, the project benefited from four different State of California automatic time extensions. And the city—and also the cities initiated one-year time extension, which extended the expiration date to July 15, 2018. The applicant submitted the time extension application on the 26th of April back in 2018, which reserved the right to process this time extension prior to that July 15, 2018 expiration. And then, on August 27th, 2018, the Planning Commission denied without prejudice the time extension to propose—or with the proposal by a 6-1 vote with Commissioner Obama as a no vote. Here's an image of the site and the proposed zoning. The site is located, like I said, southeast of State Route 76, east of Stagecoach Road, and at the terminus of San Ramon Drive. Site is zoned RMB, residential medium density, which permits a density range of 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre. Does also have some components of OS, which is open space. The development for this site would only occur within the RMB designated areas. It would not be within the open-spaced areas. The surrounding uses consist of Highway 76 to the north, the River Oaks apartment complex, and vacant lands to the east, and a portion of the Oceana senior land home development to the south, and condominiums and apartments to the west. There is an approved project for approximately 29 single families located to the northeast of this site. That's called Rancho Vista. Here's an image of the proposed landscape plan, which will pretty much landscape all the areas on San Ramon and San Dimas and also their interior areas within their own development. Here's a little better image here. No more than 30% of this site will be developed. Like I said, in the zoning there, they're only going to develop within the medium-density Their proposed architecture is somewhat of a Mediterranean Spanish-type design with a mixture of colonial Spanish. They have a multifamily kind of attached duplex condominium complex-type design. Here's an image—a visual image of what it would look—this is what it looks like now, and with the proposed development. You can see that the visual image is pretty limited in terms of visual impacts, so this is looking from the Oceana side of the community. So, a little summary on the Planning Commission's findings for their denial. Planning Commission proposed that the project would generate additional traffic, parking, and environmental impact, so it conflicted the general plan and land use element. The traffic generated would be consistent with the type and density of the residential development designated by the general plan and by the zoning. The proposed traffic mitigations conditioned within the project would improve the circulation within the area and also improve parking situations along Stagecoach Road. There's conditions to implement or pay into a fee for two traffic lights, one on El Camino Real and Vista Bella, and the other one on San Dimas and Rancho de Loro.
San.
San Ramon, sorry. The other finding would—the design would be inconsistent with the zoning ordinance. The site meets all of the RMB development standards in terms of type, bulk scale, parking requirements, and setbacks in heights. The project architecture is outdated. Within this area, we have some older-type architecture. This would be a newer-type design, which in hopes would promote some more redevelopment and some remodeling of these older developments surrounding this area. The project could not be adequately, reasonably, and conveniently served by existing and public—planned public services, utilities, and public facilities. The project has been conditioned to meet all the city's standards to ensure that public facilities are not impacted and will not impact the environment nor the city infrastructure. And lastly, the project is not compatible with the existing and surround—surrounding multifamily and single-family developments. The proposed density for this project is at 8.7 dwelling units per acre. Like I said, they're pretty much only developing no more than 30% of the site. The allowable density that they could go up to is anywhere from 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre, so they are well under that and consistent when compatible with the neighborhood. So, with that, staff's analysis focused on the extension of the time and compliance with the subdivision ordinance, compliance with the zoning ordinance, and the general plan, and as condition, the project would meet all the current codes. So, with that, staff asks that City Council reverse the Planning Commission's decision and adopt the resolution granting the appeal of Planning Commission's denial of time extension, tentative map, development plan, and variances. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present, and they would like to make themselves known. Thank you.
And we'll hear from the applicant.
Sorry, the preloading process didn't work. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Ann Gunter. I'm with the Lightfoot Planning Group. Our offices are at 5900 Pastore Court in Carlsbad, and I am here tonight on representing the applicant for the time extension. This project has an extensive history and a lot of background. I'm going to try to do a quick summary of this. As Scott mentioned, the—the property, as it's approved, was subject to a general plan and zone amendment. This project worked with the community more than a lot of projects that I've seen in my 30-plus years working in Oceanside. They worked for several years on a general plan modification because when the property was acquired, you can see the residential at the top covered about 70% of the property and the open space covered about 30%, but the residential didn't follow what was really the most sensitive areas on the site. And so, the general plan amendment approved in 2003, after several years working with the community, came up with the revised boundaries that are on your current general plan. And that shows residential over approximately 50% of the property as a designation and the balance being open space, which protected the steep slopes, the sensitive wetland habitats, as well as some other biological resources. That revision also reduced the potential for the total number of units. In addition, as part of that neighborhood work, there were some concerns from the neighborhood, and there were seven stipulations that the owner agreed to, and those are recorded against the property. The project, as it's approved, implements all of those and is consistent with all of those stipulations. And those had to do with street improvements and total number of unit caps, access provisions, as well as some design criteria. During the next three years, the applicant worked on a project, and the—the image at the top is the project as it was proposed for most of that period of time. There were a lot of refinements, but the 198-unit plan is what was evaluated as part of the environmental impact report process. It shows the three villages. Village 1 along Stagecoach at the bottom, Village 2 on the left, and Village 3 on the upper portion of the site. As part of the environmental review and based on additional comments from the community between the draft EIR and the final EIR, the project was revised to eliminate about 40 units. That included all of Village 3, so that that could remain as habitat preservation, and about five buildings on the south or in the bottom-right corner of Village 1 to further reduce the number of units in that project. So, the project, as it was finally approved at 158 units, reflected all of those discussions The project—in looking at this project, there were extensive evaluations of the visual conditions that were included in the EIR, and traffic was a substantial concern from the community as well. The final conditions are based on the traffic study that was done as well as the discussions with the community. Stagecoach Road, which is at the bottom of the image, is currently built to about half-street. People park on the dirt off to the side. With this project, Stagecoach Road will be fully improved, and it will have some limited curb cuts for the access into the development. The opposite side of Stagecoach right now has a large number of curb cuts adjacent to those units, and so there's not a lot of available street parking. This project also will provide a new roadway connection between Stagecoach Road and San Ramon. That provides for emergency access and a new evacuation route, should that be necessary. But the community did not want to have cut-through traffic going from El Camino Real over to Rancho de Loro Drive, and so it was agreed that this would—this community would be gated and that the residents of Ocean Point would have access through those gates, and they would be available for emergency personnel to open in the event that through traffic was needed in an emergency situation. But otherwise, this property will have private streets and it will be gated. Scott mentioned the two traffic signals. The—the project had some cumulative impacts at those two intersections. At Vista Ray, there were some—a couple of options looked at in the EIR, including doing some median improvements versus a signal. The community really wanted to see that via traffic light, and that is the way the project was approved, and the applicant will be 100% responsible for installing that light. At Rancho de Loro and San Ramon, that light is something that I know you've heard about for many years. Those neighbors really want to see that light go in, and this project is conditioned—if that light isn't in before this project goes in, this project will have to install it. It's my understanding that the city is moving forward with that program, and it's likely that that will be installed, and in that case, this project will pay its share towards that signal when it is developed. In addition to those kind of more major improvements, there were agreements made on doing some red curbing, some striping changes on some of the internal roadways within Oceana, again, to deal with the line-of-sight issues, some areas where they felt like some of those intersections weren't safe, and to also look—agreed to look at some parking controls during school bus times and adding some additional speed limit signs. So, all of those things are documented as conditions of approval, and those remain—would remain with the time extension. In terms of parking, I mentioned Stagecoach Road. That will provide approximately 50 additional public spaces on Stagecoach Road. Those are not counted towards the project, but those will enhance— Those are not counted towards the project, but those will enhance the parking availability in that neighborhood. On-site, the parking meets, actually exceeds the parking requirements of the ordinance, provides two spaces for each residential unit for the residents, and it provides more guest spaces than are required by the ordinance. For numbers, there's 33 guest spaces required for both projects and the project will provide 58 guest spaces. This project is well-planned. It had neighborhood involvement and influence throughout. And I think that input resulted in a design that is really excellent for this site. There'll be, 56 percent of the site is going to be retained in a biological open space preserve. That means ownership is going to be transferred to an approved conservation entity. It will be fully endowed for long-term management and maintenance. And that open space is the light-green area that you see up on that screen. In addition to that, there's all of the slope landscaping and public or private recreation areas for each of the projects as well as their internal, their internal walkways and This project provides attractive new housing opportunities in the area. It is below the base density, as Scott mentioned. And I think that the product type is something that is still contemporary and current. It uses townhomes, it uses a design that was, again, worked out very closely with the community. Granting this time extension does not mean the project is going to use 2008 standards. Rather, the project is required by the way the city writes their conditions and the way your codes are written, that it must conform with all current regulations. That includes updated stormwater regulations, which requires grading and design changes to make sure that those happen. Title 24 updates for energy conservation. This project, when it's built, will probably be way more efficient than had it been built 10 years ago. Obviously, current building codes and all of the final engineering and biological requirements. Also, all the processing and impact fees will be based on the fees that are in place at the time that those permits are pulled. So why do we need a three-year extension on this project? It's kind of the elephant in the room, I think. This project was approved in 2008. And you will probably remember that that was the early stages of the recession. By then, there were already discussions about automatic extensions because development just was not going to happen. But the applicant getting that approval in 2008 after many, many years of working with the community didn't just sit and wait. They understood that it was going to take longer, they knew this was a complex property and that they had a lot of work to do with the resource agencies and their final engineering design. And so they used that time to work through that permitting process. They did updated biological surveys, which they needed to do for their formal permit applications. They did final engineering study, supplemental geotechnical work, updated their stormwater, which, again, is going to be updated again because things have changed even further. And the reason we're asking for three years now is that, is primarily because we need to restart the Resource Agency permits. Those permits were issued after a two-and-a-half-year process. And unfortunately, those permits have expired. And that has to do with nuances of what has to be done in order to get extensions of those permits which are, were not available. This project will need to go through their application processes all over again, including survey updates next spring. And unfortunately, staffing levels at the federal and state levels are, agencies are really low relative to the number of permit requests that they have. And their timeframes have only been getting longer, not shorter. Upon approval of this time extension, the applicant has their biological and design team ready to move forward to submit those applications. And we want to get that process restarted. We have final engineering underway. This project is, is ready to move, but we need to have enough time to be able to go through that Resource Agency permit process and, and get to the end of this. I have lots of information. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer. And if I have time reserved, I would be happy to do rebuttal after public comment.
Okay. The first two speakers are Linda Slater and Pat McCarty.
Please come up.
Hi. My name is Linda Slater. I'm a 13-year resident of Oceana and I live at 3755 Vista Campania North. I think this development, the traffic situation is a bad idea. The traffic that would be coming up along Stagecoach, a widened street, would have to exit through either, come along Vista Bella and exit through Vista Ray or Vista Oceana. And I happen to have a next-door neighbor and a neighbor two or three houses down who have both been in very severe accidents making left turns onto El Camino Real from Vista Ray and making a left turn from El Camino Real onto Vista Oceana. They're very dangerous situations. There is a light and a left turn signal at Vista Oceana, but somebody coming along didn't see the light and broadsided the car. And the gentleman eventually died of his injuries. So it's very unsafe. Those are the only two places that we can go in and out of Oceana. And the traffic situation would, would be very dangerous. Thank you.
Now that you have your applause out of the way, I would ask that you hold your applause to the end. Thank you.
My name is Pat McCarty and I'm also a resident of the original Oceana Senior Community, which is due south of the planned development. I'm also a veteran, U.S. Navy. And I'd like to start by saying thank you for your service to all of you on the council and the staff and all the employees of the City of Oceanside to make, because this is such a great place to live. I just love it here. So thank you for everything you do. I agree with the Planning Commission's conclusion that this development is too intense for the project site, given its steep topography. And also, as Linda mentioned, the traffic is, is a huge issue. Also, the proposed construction encroaches on one of the few remaining wild open spaces in our area. An area that's home to native plants, including California quail and road runners and the coyotes that, that keep our rat and rabbit populations under control. When Ocean Yona was constructed, I was in high school at Mission San Luis Rey in the '60s. And this valley was filled with ranches and orchards and a lot of wild open spaces. Over the last six decades, it's almost been completely filled with housing, leaving very few areas for the native plants and animals. And it's my understanding that preserving oceans, open spaces is part of Oceanside's master development plan, and I think it's an important one. One of the documents presented by the developer states, and I'll quote, "Ocean Point will serve to promote the redevelopment and improvement of older and outdated structures in the neighborhood." This statement appears to favor the eventual tear-down or replacement of places like the 50-year-old community, Oceana, where I live. I hope that's not the case. Finally, in emergencies, as also as Linda mentioned, there is only one way out of Oceana, and that is on El Camino Real. And Stagecoach Road, since, now I understand from the presentation that those, the road going the other way will be closed off. Stagecoach Road is where all these cars are going to go out, and that's where the 2,000 residents of Oceana also go out. Adding several hundred more cars to the local automobile population would make it virtually impossible for us to get out in case of an emergency. So I urge the City Council not to reverse the Planning Commission's decision. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Steve Pocock and Sandra Falabella.
Okay. My name is Sandra Falabella. I am a member of the Rancho Hermosa Board Association. And thank you for allowing us to speak, mayor and council members. I too and our residents believe that the traffic and the parking is going to continue to be a huge problem. I live on San Dimas, the corner of San Ramon. I've lived there for 11 years. When I first came here, there was very little overflow parking from River Oaks Apartments. And if there was, it was down at the bottom of the hill, close to the apartments. Now, 11 years later, it's bumper-to-bumper cars all the way up the hill past San, San Dimas Avenue. So the parking can only get worse. And the applicant said that they planned parking spaces for their project and guest parking. But in 10 years, the economics have changed and the, and a condominium that was built for two adults realistically will probably hold three or four adults to make the mortgage payments and the rent payments. And that's going to be double the cars and drivers that they planned on. And they did make arrangements to widen Stagecoach, but San Ramon, you can't widen the street. That's it. And according to their 2008 drawings and plans, they're going to have two villages exiting on San Ramon and only one on Stagecoach. So it's just going to be a horrendous traffic problem because when they run out of spaces in Ocean Point, then their overflow is going to be looking for other places to park. And also the wildlife. The coyotes serve a purpose. They, as it was mentioned by a resident of Oceana, they keep the rodent population in check. And there just isn't any room for any building, whether it's Ocean Point or Rancho Vista back in those hills. It needs to be kept for the wildlife and the existing residents. We don't need the extra headaches and traffic and all that's going to go along with overpopulation. And I hope that the council will stick with the Planning Commission's denial of the extension. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Pocock. I'm a resident of Rancho Hermosa. My address is 258 San Dimas. And I'd like to speak against the appeal of plan, of this particular plan for Ocean Point. The question I have to ask is how many extensions? How long should an extension process go? Is that an indefinite process? The Planning Commission itself basically pointed out that things change. Things have changed in our community. Whether or not you believe in global warming, there is an absolute basis for presuming that we have a bigger fire danger. So I would ask, are 2005 standards for water pressure at a fire hydrant accurate for the firefighting we now expect from our firefighting communities? So the question that I ask is how long? One of the things that the representative for the developer talked about was community outreach. I did a straw poll in our community. We've had about 40 percent turnover. That's one of the characteristics of the senior communities. And within the last 10 years, nobody remembered any meetings that were held in Rancho Hermosa, either for or against this project. So I would argue that the communities have changed enough so that the Planning Commission is showing some wisdom by saying maybe we should do this process again. The second piece of this is I actually discovered the sewer and water plan that was done by Dexter Wilson Engineering is dated June 2005. The documents that are presented in the 2008 approval post-date that. And yet, there was a section in there, item 128 in the approval itself actually said that there had to be a renew, I'm sorry, a review, a new review of the sewer and water setup and that that had to be provided prior to the project actually being completed. I would like to point that out and merely ask that perhaps somebody go ahead and deal with that, essentially saying that a revised water and sewer study prepared by the developer had to be completed prior to the project being approved. I would ask that you say no to this appeal and thank you very much for your time.
The next two speakers are Kathleen White and Frank Denzick.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm representing the Rancho Hermosa HOA Board. We have several concerns with the Ocean Point project as follows. One, as previously discussed, traffic congestion and bottlenecks specifically at the intersection of Rancho Del Oro and San Ramon, given that there is no traffic light and you're very familiar with this issue. Two is the lack of access to alternate emergency evacuation routes other than San Ramon. Four, Rancho Hermosa, the River Oaks Apartments, and possibly then the new condominium projects. Third is the additional destruction of the roadway that is currently in serious disrepair, that being San Ramon, since it's about 33 years beyond the time that the roadway has been repaired or resurfaced. So respectfully, we are not in agreement with the extension and ask, however, if you do extend, grant the extension, that we request remedy, support, and assistance from you for the following. One, installation of a traffic light at Rancho Del Oro and San Ramon immediately within the next three to six months. Two is access to an alternate emergency evacuation route for these 611 households. Third is the repair and restructuring and resurfacing of the actual San Ramon roads as well as the Rancho Hermosa community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Frank Denzick, 3615 Vista Bella, number 35, Oceanside, Oceana. Mayor Peter Weiss, Deputy Mayor Chuck Lowry, and council members. On August 27th, eight or nine representatives of all three sides of this property testified concerning our opposition to the three-year extension. The fourth side of this property borders Highway 76. I am one of 1,500 Oceana residents in, in the Oceana Retirement Community, seniors who live south of this proposed development. The Planning Commission's six-to-one recommendation was a correct decision concerning the health and welfare of all taxpaying citizens involved. Under your leadership, council members, we can say that you have care and concern for the needs of Oceanside citizens by leaving certain areas of the city, particularly where steep hills and ravines are concerned, free of development to an open space for potential nature trails and eventually parks in the future. Indeed, there are very few parks within a mile of this area south of Highway 76. The environmental impact study for this project was completed more than 10 years ago. Since that time, we have additional experience to consider. Substantial congestion is already experienced on both Stagecoach Drive in the west, Vista Bella to the south, as well as Ramon Drive east. Most senior citizens use Vista Bella and evacuation would be a serious issue as was brought up by others. The consequent deterioration of these roads, particularly because they represent steep inclines, would certainly represent an additional cost to the city. Nor is the staff report current in this regard regarding the actual experience. The great elevation difference between the south entrance to Stagecoach Drive and the north end would cause substantial erosion problems in terms of the asphalt, water drainage, and sewage when heavy rains occur. This would also add to the cost of the city. The environmental impact study also did not factor in the potential damage done when creating an exit to Ramon Drive. The natural habitat to native species such as the California quail, coyotes, et cetera, would be adversely affected, not to even mention the congestion. In summary, sometimes less is more. In summary, sometimes less is more. Less building construction on the sides of the hills and ravines means more open space. Less construction of roads means more care for the natural habitat of birds and animals. Less congestion and noise pollution means better neighborhoods and more attractive Oceanside communities. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
The next two speakers are Cindy Fisher and Leonard Kroner.
Good evening, esteemed Oceanside City Council members and mayor. I'm Cindy Fisher. I live at 3902 Vista Campana North, number 16, essentially at The Point. That's where I live. I have serious reservations about the proposed condo complex that is slated to be built in my backyard. Those involved are requesting an extension. I would much rather see no extension and have them scrap the entire project. I did not live here when the first plan, the plan was originally approved over 10 years ago, but I was very concerned when I heard about it a few months ago. I was one of about a dozen concerned citizens to speak out against this proposal in August. At that time, the commissioners made the correct decision to deny the extension. I was stunned in this made to learn recently about their decision that it was overturned. I'm shocked that the traffic review passed as there will be 200 to 300 more cars in this tiny area as a result of the complex, and also concerned about who's going to pay for the non-existent road and widening Stagecoach. Many residents of Oceana come to an area known as The Point to watch the spectacular sunsets and socialize. We do not want our serene view of nature to be disrupted by the condos. This also sets a bad precedent for others wanting to add even more dwellings further, compounding the problems and reducing our property values. In addition to the negative impact on our view, there will be noise to contend with. There will be noisy land excavations followed by loud construction sounds for months, possibly years, followed by 200 or more new residents making their own noise. What about the disruption to the natural habitat, to the animals already living there? Other people have mentioned this. We have coyotes, hawks, rattlesnakes, quail, rabbits, just to name a few. This construction project will encroach on their habitat. We certainly don't need more coyotes coming any closer to our homes. As it is in the evenings, the coyotes sometimes walk behind my house, and they're literally about 15 feet from where I'm sitting in my living room, literally. What's to keep them from jumping at me through my screen door? The coyotes have attacked and carried off small animals in our neighborhood. What's to keep them from attacking someone's small grandchildren or attacking any of the frail elderly residents who live peacefully here now? This is a very real concern for us. And recently, my friend almost stepped on a rattlesnake right on the sidewalk. In fact, he's here today. City council members, it's your responsibility to defend the residents of Oceanside against outsiders coming in to overdevelop our cozy neighborhood right here. Your mission statement mandates that you serve the, and I quote, "best interests of all citizens and ensure that Oceanside is a desirable place to live, work, do business, and to visit." Please, do your job and deny this extension and the entire project. If you happen to disagree with me and do grant their extension, I strongly implore you to also pass a measure that prohibits further extensions. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Leonard Kroner. I live at 3960 San Pablo Avenue in the Rancho Hermosa Development. I just wanted to make a couple of points. The traffic study that was the basis for the original approval of the project at Ocean Point, was done in 2007. Conditions have changed since 2007. We don't know what the current conditions are unless there's an updated traffic study. This is particularly important because currently, San Ramon Drive is the only access to Rancho de Oro for 428 residences, including 282 River Oaks Apartment residences and 176 Rancho Hermosa Senior Community residences. This is significant because you're going to add 158 condominiums with exclusive access over San Ramon and Stagecoach, a 20 to 30 percent increase to, and there's no provision in traffic mitigation, there's a traffic light, but that's not going to solve the problem of widening the road. It's not going to solve the problem of providing alternate access in the event of emergencies. And, as it stands now, that road is congested. It's near El Camino High School on Rancho de Oro, and the road's congested from Rancho de Oro, the road's congested from the existing Rancho Hermosa community and the River Oaks Apartments, and now you're also considering more residences in Rancho Vista. So, basically, I think what the planning commission properly asked for is you're affecting over 600 or 700 residences here, and the decision should be based upon current studies, which is not happening, based on 2007 traffic studies alone. So, we would urge that you deny the appeal, allow for more time to study the situation, the existing current situation with regard to traffic and the other impacts, so that you make a decision that will have a lasting and proper impact on all the residences in Rancho Hermosa, River Oaks, and if you approve Ocean Point, Ocean Point also. But, right now, this traffic is not, traffic study and the traffic situation is not conducive to adding 158 more residents over a street that's already congested. Thank you very much for your time.
The last three speakers are Jamie Thompson, Joe Hood, and Michael Odegaard.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Thompson. I'm at San Ramon and San Dimas. I was surprised to hear tonight that the traffic light that's supposed to go in at San Ramon and Rancho de Oro is not a promised paid-for traffic light by the applicant. It's money towards the project in which the city promises to finish the project. It's not a guaranteed light on this project. That was quite shocking, where the other traffic light is a put-in-by-the-project traffic light. So, I've been going down to the city since 2006 saying, can we have a stop sign put in there at San Ramon? And they've been saying, no, you cannot. And then, until a project just put in, you'll have a stoplight put in. And then, in 2008, they said, oh, we have an applicant. You'll get a traffic light with that applicant. And, so, I've been strung along going down every year to the planning department saying, yep, the applicant is going to get something put in. Meanwhile, we've had no less than five accidents at that intersection, plus a fatality at that intersection. Two years ago, a car fire from an accident at that intersection. And then, they said, okay, we'll do a study on it, and they, so they put in a meter to check the traffic in the summer during an off time when there was no school going on. So, they said, oh, you don't meet the traffic standards of that, and so, no, you can't have a light. And so, what I'm asking for is a temporary stop sign to be put in there. You know, there are only $350 a stop sign. You guys approved them many times here in the council. And so, I would ask for that to happen regardless of you approve this or don't approve this study. Everybody has been saying that the traffic study is outdated. It's already 10 years outdated. That's for today. This is, this project's asking for three additional years. It's going to be 13 years outdated beyond today. So, really, what is, what is the real deal here? So, I'm asking for just a traffic light or a traffic sign at that intersection regardless of the situation. Let's stop having traffic accidents there, you know? That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Joe Hood. I'm a member of a group of tri-city residents that is vitally concerned about climate change. I have a different take from what the other speakers have been saying. To the significant degree, I'm neutral about this particular project. However, I'm terribly disturbed by what I did not hear from the planners and designers. I did not hear anything about building in, using codes and design that will improve the problems we have with climate change. I'm sure you've all heard of the United Nations report last week that said, we are in trouble, and we indeed are. We heard one phrase that said something about energy efficiency, but you know what? I didn't hear a single thing that said that these homes would be designed for net-zero energy or using passive housing standards that are better by far for the environment. I heard nothing about energy generation on the property. What about solar that could protect the, or build, provide energy for the facility? I heard nothing about plans for zero emission vehicles. Where's the plan for charge points for electric vehicles? I heard nothing about zero waste on this property, dealing with the carbon waste with compost or bio-processing to deal with the waste in a, in a clean way. Without, I'm going to speak again later about climate change with you, but without addressing these issues, I urge you, do not approve this or any other significant project. We really need to get serious about these issues together. And, we should leave a substantial amount of space on our planet for non-human species. Leaving open space makes a great deal of sense. So, if you do approve this, please do not approve, the extension, please do not approve the project without significant improvements in its movements toward dealing with our climate change problem. Thanks so much.
Most of my concerns have been addressed. One more I'd like to add to that list that is exacerbated by climate change is fuel modification plans. And being that this is on the edge of the natural landscape, that should also be included. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this? Now's the time.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor. I would like to say that, at this time, I don't think this project is very viable. Stagecoach Road is a very narrow road. It comes to a dead end. It's going to have to be rebuilt. There's a slope down the side of Stagecoach, which creates another problem. The biggest problem is all the housing developments that have been going on in the city of Oceanside, which concerns me quite a bit. It concerns me about the infrastructure of the city and how well is the infrastructure doing? Does the city have enough money to repair the old infrastructure as far as sewer lines and water lines? And yet, we keep, the city keeps building more and more houses. If you drive down Mission and you go east on Mission, you'll see all kinds of new apartments, complexes, houses, all the way past the Mission itself. And I'm wondering how the city is going to maintain and upkeep all the infrastructure for these. We're in an area, we live in Southern California, we live by the beach. It is, it is virtually a high impact as far as water goes and the droughts. City council has talked for years about the water problems and getting water out of San Luis Rey, and I understand that might be coming up in a few minutes. But, anyway, it is a major problem, and I don't see, and I don't understand, why the city is continuing on allowing more and more houses to be built in here. It's no longer looking like a beach community. It's more like looking at the city of Anaheim. Thank you.
Now, would be the time for the applicant's rebuttal if you choose to do so?
Ann Gunter with Lightfoot Planning Group. I did not mean to confuse the issue, but I think I may have relative to some of the traffic improvements in the signal, so I'd like to go over those. But, in terms of an overview, this project is a clustered development. The general plan, as it was adopted, looked at the most feasible locations for residential development on that site and placed into permanent open space designations those steep slopes and sensitive areas. In addition, the environmental process that this project went through did what it's supposed to do. It identified additional areas within the site that are designated for residential use, which are also being placed in open space. And, consistent with your open space goals, those open space areas with this project will be put into permanent open space with protections, with funding to allow for management and maintenance for habitat purposes in perpetuity. Fuel modification was considered as part of this project. It was accounted for. Those fuel modification areas are excluded from the biological open space. There have been some updates and changes in fuel modification requirements where the Fire Department has told us they may allow for some lesser fuel modification areas in some locations on this project. If that comes to be, those areas can be added back into the habitat area. But, the impact footprint, as it was evaluated with this project, did incorporate the 100-foot fuel modification buffers that the Fire Department required. In terms of the streets and the lights, I don't know if this is going to show, but the, this project is building a connection between Stagecoach and San Ramon. The question about emergency evacuation routes, I think, is best addressed that way. Currently, the people who live off of San Ramon can only go east to Rancho de Oro Drive, and the people in the western part of Oceana can only go to the west. With this project, that street connection will be available to use should evacuation be necessary. Hopefully, it never would, but that would be available so that the people who live in San Ramon could go westerly if there were an issue or problem and Rancho de Oro were blocked, and the people in Oceana could go easterly to San Ramon in the event there was an issue or a problem on the El Camino real site. The traffic study evaluated all kinds of conditions on this, including full build-out of the city under the general plan, and it determined that there were no impacts. I understand that it's 10 years later and projects have come online. This project looked at the cumulative effects of projects that were planned at the time, including things like Pacific Coast Business Park, El Corazon. Some of those projects have been built, some of those projects still remain to be built. But, this project, in looking at the traffic effects, didn't just look at, what is this project going to do back in 2008? It looked at, what is it going to do going into the future? And, that is the basis for the conclusions that there were no impacts that couldn't be mitigated. Those mitigations included the two signals. As I mentioned, at Vista Rey and RDO and El Camino, that signal will be installed. There is also a condition for this project to install the signal at San Ramon and Rancho de Oro Drive. That's condition number 70. What I was trying to indicate is that it's my understanding that the city has placed that signal into the current year's CIP. If the city builds that, this project still has to contribute their share of dollars towards that signal that will already be in place. If for some reason that signal has not been installed when this project goes forward, it would be responsible for the, for the implementation and construction of that signal at that time. So, if this project gets through the Resource Agency process in a hurry, and we get done in a year, which would be lovely, then that signal would get installed with the project construction. If the city has installed that signal that, that is on the signal plan before that time through your CIP process, then, then the condition requires that... your CIP process, then the condition requires that they still contribute their component share to it. And finally, I just want to address some of the questions about, you know, what's being done in terms of this project being green? And I may have oversimplified that by saying we have to meet current codes. What this project will have to meet when it reaches building permit is it will have to comply with the California Green Building Code. It will have solar panels for electrical generation on all of the, for every unit. I'm a big proponent of making sure you've got charging stations for electric vehicles because I drive one. All of those units will have a suitable connection within the garage so that if people own electric vehicles, they can charge them in their garages. And regarding wastes, this project will be doing the standard city waste bins as well as the organics, which I expect will be online by the time this project is built. If there's anything that you have questions about that I haven't addressed, I'd be happy to comment on that. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Kern.
Thanks. Jonathan, can you bring us up to date on the traffic light? Or is that Jeff? You know, some, but where are we at on the traffic light? San Ramon especially.
Yes. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the traffic signal, as Ann indicated, is actually in this year's current CIP. So in speaking with our traffic engineering staff, it is expected to be in place by the end of this current fiscal year, which of course would be June 30th of 2019. It's actually currently under design and construction is expected to be completed this fiscal year. I should also mention that I know that our engineering staff is also looking to see whether or not we can do some road improvements in terms of improving the street conditions on San Ramon as well, as part of our typical pavement program.
Okay. Thank you. Everything I heard tonight, I heard in basically 2008 when I was sitting here. The same issues, you know, the traffic issues, the open space issues, the mitigation issues. And it was a good project then, and I think is still a good project now. The idea that, I know that some people are concerned, but it was the same concerns in 2008, and we had unanimous consent of our planning commission back then, and unanimous consent by our council back then. So I see nothing that has changed in that because I think the project is essentially the same. The idea of the 158 units, it's only 30%, 70% open space. It's going to be a overspace, open space easement overlay. So I'm going to move staff recommendation and reverse the planning commission's decision and adopt the resolution granting the appeal of the planning commission's decision because I still, 2008, I believed in it, and I still believe in it today. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And I do remember this project, and when I was going door-to-door, I was asking, really find, trying to find someone who was around back then. Is anybody here that was around in 2000, between 2003 and 2008?
Yes. Raise your hand.
Okay. All right. Then you will remember, hopefully, and then I would like to, if someone can, wants to correct me, please raise your hand. I'd like to, because I want to get this really clear. My recollection, going through all the past council reports and the staff reports, is that this was a standing room only, standing room only in 2003. No, hell no. Do you guys remember that? Yes? That was a time when they, when this developer came to the council and asked for the zone change to increase the densities. Do you remember that? Dixie Bales was here back then. And that actually passed on a three-to-two vote. Jim Wood, 2003, he was not yet mayor, so he was a councilman at the time. And I voted against this project, against changing the zoning. Every single person from Rancho Hermosa and Oceana did not want this to happen, standing room only. And so when I hear the representative from the developer say, "We had some discussions." So this is actually 15 years old, this project, so far, 15 years old. There were discussions. Now, was anybody that was part of the discussions, are they here today? Because the main person that I kept in touch with was Dixie Bales. And so there was a whole list of changes that were made, including getting rid of one of those villages. And while I still wanted to vote no in 2008, Dixie Bales asked me to vote yes. And so Jim Wood and I voted yes, but I had a whole lot of reservations about this because it was higher density, even though they got rid of one of the villages, not really, you know, it was because of the topology. When I first saw this on the agenda and, you know, I saw it in the planning, that what happened with the planning commission turned it down nearly unanimously, I think it was unanimously, I thought, great, because no project should be 10 years old. No project. So much has changed since then. And what I did was go to the city manager and say, "You know what? We need to start coming up, or we need to come up with a process, a procedure, that if there's a project X number of years old, then it has to go through some process where you just don't listen to the developer, but you also get input from the community." Because a lot has changed, especially traffic. The rail was placed over there on El Camino, El Camino Real, because of all the accidents that were happening. Do you guys remember that? On Oceana, just came and said, "Look, we need this, we need protection. We need a rail." And we put that in. So much has changed. Normally, an EIR, as I recall, I don't know what the current rule is, has a five-year lifespan, shelf life, we used to call it. Oh, you know, let's not waste too much money on these EIRs because then they have to be amended and then changed because it's just too long, five years. Here, we've got 10 years. The traffic has changed. There was a change in zoning, so this was not a unanimous decision initially. The only reason why I voted for it was because Dixie Bales was on there. Sir, you said you were here during the negotiations, is that right? Gentleman in the white shirt, yes, you. Your name again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your statement.
Your name again?
Mike Faulkner, Oceanside Community Association, House Number Three, Unit Number Five. I apologize for that.
Yes. So you were, you were part of the negotiations then?
I was a homeowner at the time. I was not at the board at the time, but I was a homeowner and--
You heard about the negotiations?
We did pay the, this tune is being played the second time. We don't need to have it played again. So there's a lot of problems. It should be looked at, it should be re-looked at again, and another impact study should be done.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was, is there anybody here who was part of the negotiations? Yes, ma'am? You were part of the negotiations?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I know, maybe I'm not making myself clear. In two, in, after 2003, when this was, the change in zoning was approved, on a very close call, three-to-two, Jim Wood and I know, and I think that was Terry Johnson and Jack Feller and who was the third person? Voted yes, I forget. In 2003, there, this developer did go out and do some outreach to try to see what they could change in terms of the actual project presented in 2008. And so Dixie Bales and other people on the Oceana HOA board met with, as well as San Ramon residents who lived on San Ramon and Rancho Hermosa. I don't remember about River Oaks apartments, but she, she felt that there had been sufficient movement by the developer, but that was, again, 2008. I had, I was, it was a very tough decision for me because I'm being told by Dixie Bales, and she was like, you know, nobody mess with Dixie. And I wanted to honor what the negotiations on behalf of Oceana and Rancho Hermosa, but 10 years is just too long. I am not going to be able to support staff's recommendation. I want to support the planning commission. You all spoke there. You know, the only way to go, you know, to go forward on this is to let it start all over again. I mean, 15 years, 10 years? There's just no way this should go forward. Thank you.
We have a hotel project that's going 30 years. Are you going to vote against that or go to the groundbreaking when we do it? How wide is Stagecoach? I'm not, staff knows.
As of right now, it's approximately, or Councilmember Feller, it's approximately 28 feet in width.
Okay. And, and that, under the plan, this is going to be widened a little bit.
The new proposal is just a little bit under 60, which is our city standard for residential roads. I'll have to look into a little more and give you the exact number in a minute.
Okay. In the meantime, I'll, you know, all that has been said, she still voted for a project there once we rezoned it to, so, you know, that's not an excuse. You know--
Well, you never dealt with Dixie.
There was a question about water pressure in the review of the water and sewer and access. I think we heard about the access for emergency. I mean, Vista de la Valle, which was on the other side of El Camino, was a project that went before everybody in the 90s. And that's deemed open space and probably is much more dangerous than, for the homes along the El Camino there. But, but as far as access for fire, you've completely given a clear picture that it can go through this project out San Ramon onto Rancho Del Oro. But I do want to know about the water pressure, the review of the water and sewer, and does the city make, the, does the city make the applicant comply with all regulations that are in place now? She's already explained that they have to go to the agencies for their approval. How about the city? Are you still adding up the width of the street, Scott?
So in terms of the sewer and water, they'll be analyzed for all water pressure to current And then as far as the road question, the proposal, the right-of-way, will be a total of 58 feet, and that's including curb, gutter, and sidewalk. As of right now, they're at about 28 feet, so.
So, and that will, where the curb cuts are on the west side of the street will, in between, there's a few places on Stagecoach for parking, but there will be much more parking on the east side. Is that correct?
This, yeah, exactly. This will open up more parking opportunities for the east side of the road.
Okay. And my last question was, what do we do for the current codes as opposed to what was approved in 2008?
When the project comes in for building permit or plan check, they're going to have to meet all current code, whether that be stormwater, grading, and sewer and water requirements, as well as the building code, as Ann mentioned, California Green Code.
I think, I think we're going to get the wish for the light at San Ramon, it sounds like, and that is, and has been a heartache for, you know, the 18 years I've been doing this, so I'm happy to see that happen. It's much reduced from the initial project, and I think that's a tribute to even, even somebody like Dixie, who didn't want much of anything happening. But I, I think she was considering what could happen there, and that's why she asked to have that done, to vote in approval for Councilmember Sanchez's sake. So I second the motion.
I have a question, two questions for staff. Under the current laws and requirements, can any further extensions be granted?
Mayor, Mayor Weiss, no. This would be the last extension. If they wish, if it expires, then they have to basically come back with a new project.
Thank you. And there were comments made about how many more housing units for Oceanside under the state-required arena numbers, about how many additional housing units is a state expecting us to plan for or provide?
Our existing housing element, we're obligated to have zoning capacity for approximately 6,200 units.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lowery?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a frustrating project because a lot of work and time has gone into it, not to mention the money and the neighborhood concerns. It's a, it's a critical point, I think, where we are right now. I'm concerned that if we say no to this at this time, it's going to come back with an additional, I have no idea how many units based upon the new state numbers that we're going to have to comply with. But I want to respect the planning commission decision, and I'm going to vote no on this extension.
I just want to add one thing. That is, that if you vote yes on why, then the open space will be protected.
Please, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Free to, motion approved.
We're going to go to item, we're going to do two, we're going to go to item 15 quick, which is the fourth quarter and year-ending report by Jane.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. Let me get the timer off, and we'll get that going. I'm here to present the fourth quarter and year-ending June 30th, 2018 preliminary financial results report and budget adjustments and transfers. Staff submits the preliminary fourth quarter financial status report and recommends approval of the fourth quarter budget adjustments and transfers. General fund revenues, the preliminary revenues for the year-ending 6/30/2018 is $153,686. The key areas, these are, these three revenues represent 60% of-- The key areas, these three revenues represent 60% of our total revenues. Property tax came in at 105% of budget, sales tax at 102%, and transient occupancy tax at 114%. General fund expenditures, staff did a terrific job in controlling costs while still providing services to the community, came in at 95% of the budget at $151,39,000. Recommendations, staff recommends that city council approve the fourth quarter budget adjustments and transfers. Thank you. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Are there any public?
No.
Councilmember Feller?
How did you do so well? Good planning.
Good planning.
I was amazed when I had my review that we've done well without punching into our reserves, so I move approval. Thank you.
I'll second. We've got a quorum. Let's vote.
Deputy Mayor Lowery, do you want to speak to this item? Please vote.
Thank you.
Four yes and one absent. Motion approved.
And I've been asked to take a break, so we'll take a break until 8 o'clock. Is that good?